Welcome to the regular committee of the whole meeting for April the fourth, two thousand and twenty-two. I got to follow this meeting's order at seven P M. I would like to recognize that we're on the traditional land of Natchez way of creation. And we are homeland of the Maykee and that we are all community people. I would also like to say that counselors will have two chances to speak. And the second chance will be offered after all councils have the opportunity to speak the first time to each of the points that you're bringing up tonight. Next, propose the vote to community feedback. We have any questions, concerns?
Ron Madetuck, Twenty-ounce Street. I see on the agenda, there's an attachment from the Public Works Director. And in the summary of that attachment, it says, "The wastewater treatment plant has had many ongoing issues from before the plant was turned over to this, to the city," is how it starts. Now, my question here is, who is responsible for the commissioning costs of that thirty-six million dollar plant?
Yeah, commissioning costs would have all been covered as part of the overall project. So it would have been covered as a tripartite, so part of the federal government, the province and the city.
So should the haulage of the waste, which is now taking place, that I have questioned several times, not be covered under under the commissioning?
Uh, there's potential for that. We're in discussions on that right at this moment.
Okay, secondly, I noticed last Thursday at lunchtime, there was some counselors vehicles at the Norplex Pool. Finally, after three years of it being shut down, apparently you people are having a look. I'm just wondering if the counselors sitting here in this room tonight are free to discuss that with the local media? Or is there something preventing them from doing that?
I don't think. We went toward the pool and we hadn't discussed that because they keep the folks there?
So the official spokesperson for the city of Thompson would be the mayor and myself is the city manager. Any discussions that any other counselors have would be their discussions as counselors.
Okay, thanks.
And as I said, I'm not going to vote by any here. Thank you. Can I have an approval of the agenda, please? Councilman McMyrdal, Deputy Mayor Lamar, all favors. I would like to just comment that Councillor Valentino is in Saskatchewan. And she will be returning on Tuesday for our in-camera meeting and she will be coming back after open ceremonies for their equivalent of the association meetings in Manitoba. Also, problem?
Madam Mayor, just for clarification, that we had sent something back to the committee of the whole from the last council meeting with respect to contaminated land.
Respect the what, please?
The contaminated land at the seaplane base. Oh, I see you here, sorry, my apologies.
It's on here. Yeah. Thank you. Any other comments? So we're going into reports. Five point one is development reports.
Yeah, so this is information for councils reporting to Director of Technical Services, does a review of the roadwork, the status of it, so the work was awarded to ACOM. The kickoff meeting was held on March eighteenth. The information is being collected for the construction packages. And Geo-technical is going to take a fix once the snow melts. RFP for summer construction is expected at the end of May. As noted before, the work will, this summer will be on Nelson Road, a portion of Beaver Elk, Caribou Links, Fox Bay Silver Nickel Wolf Coral for a total of three point five five kilometers. For the water wastewater renewal project, RP for summer construction was posted for a period of three weeks. There's a one-week extension provided and that means that the RP will close on April eighth. Poses will be reviewed by the City of the Water Services Board of the City and the contract awarded by mid-April. As noted previously, the work will cover Deer Drive and Jupiter Drive. It does not now include Riverside Drive as previously mentioned. Total coverage of two point three nine kilometers of water main renewal and one point one two kilometers from wastewater. COVID, all facilities are open, all restrictions are removed. There's some ice that'll be removed as of April twenty-fifth and the GBO moved as of April thirtieth. The fall schedules already been determined and shared with the groups for the ice to go back in this fall. The facilities managers have been working at the wastewater plant to give the energy recovery ventilation systems while working in function. There's currently six options to purchase before council on the development. And the department's working with those developers to move those forward. There's four building permits for the March of, or the May of, the month of March with a total construction value of eight hundred twenty-seven thousand dollars. And that's really the sum of the report. There's an additional report attached that has the building permit summary for the last month as well as to date.
Thank you. Councilor's comments?
But since we see the reduction in our buildings so far this year, but according to our staff, it sounds like there's going to be more coming. There's been lots of interesting questions brought forward for this report. So.
Yeah, I think that, yeah, I definitely think it will pick up. I'm just wondering too, if maybe we can put on our website what people need to do and what they need the permits for. A lot of people are still not realizing they need permits to do things like fences and that. Maybe we can, you know, sort of a spring blitz up there, if that be possible, to let people know what's expected of them before the fact rather than after the fact. Okay.
Yeah, we could do that.
Thank you. And then the one more comment I have, I know for the RFP that's not going to be outdoted to the end of May, I'm wondering if we could look into maybe for the twenty-twenty-three work, maybe looking at doing that work this fall so that we don't have to wait for the snow to melt to see some of the technical things so that we could be more ready for twenty-twenty-three year.
Yeah, that's already the plan.
Thank you. Any other questions? Ask your problem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a quick question with respect to estimating potential we may have lost in terms of revenue for dumping in the lagoon versus or sorry, yes, dumping in the lagoon. And on top of that, what measures we are taking to ensure that those are being directed to the sewage treatment plant?
I'm working on a report for council on that matter. We've had meetings with the province today, the Water Services Board, on coming up with some alternative options to address the issues of the wastewater treatment plant.
Is, if I may follow up, is the the previous location where trucks were being dumped now off limits to those people that were dumping there before?
They're supposed to be off limits to any dumping except for the city's owner.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Saying no more comments? Five point two, public works report.
There's a report here from the Director of Public Works. There's a review of the street maintenance over the winter. There's discussions of where the sidewalks have been cleared. There's a discussion of one of the greater units not being currently operational and parts being sourced for that. There's issues with the second grader parts being sourced for that as well. Currently, the focus is trying to get the basins, the catch basins cleared to prevent any flooding that happens this time of year. And the street centers deployed as needed as we begin the freeze thaw cycles. At the waste disposal grounds, the current, he's still under the winter schedule and the summer schedule start on May second. There's a review here of the utility department year-to-date of the water, water services, hydrants, sanitary means, sanitary services and stormwater repairs that have been captured. There's a number of pieces of equipment at the wastewater treatment plant that are starting to show their age and are going to need some of the replacement. And those we brought forward for council's consideration as needed. And the wastewater treatment plant has noted there's still ongoing issues. And as I mentioned previously, we have discussions with the province on developing a remedial plan for those.
Thank you. Any questions? Councillor Wong?
When I read this report, one of the sections that really concerned me, which is the wastewater treatment plant, wastewater treatment plant. If I read this right, it means this, this plan is already an issue before it turns over to the city, right? Based on. Which is, I read this. So my question is, why are we taking over when there's still issue going on? Why don't we fix it before taking over? Now it's become problematic to us, so we have to find so many ways to try to mitigate the impact. Whether we're successful or not, we don't know. It's still a discussion. And the biggest concern I have is we never had meeting for so long. If I don't brought this up, I don't know whether we get this information or not today. Because I was asking about hauling, why is it hauling? So many things happening over there at the wastewater treatment plant. They should have never mentioned make it, pay attention to. And how long this been happened, we don't know until now. So what was the cost of it so far? We don't know. The only thing we know is the septic been hauling for over two hundred thousand dollars. And it really concerned me when you read that the summary is like, "The wastewater treatment plant has had many ongoing issues from before the plant was turned over to the city." And operations are continuously working with the designer and the building to correct all issues. How are we going to do that? The building's already built. Have you spent more money that are, I don't know. So anyway, I hope this, this is this could be resolved quicker, quickly. But this is one of the most expensive facility that city own. I hope more than one, once a month report because of, it looks like it's getting serious, so we'll see what happens later on and I just want to make sure that we pay attention to this facility.
Thank you. All right.
If I can, to administration, more of a request, would it be possible to have with your water sewer numbers come, have a comparison to previous year? Also, just to see what we're having.
Yeah, we could put that recommendation forward to the admin team if that's what the committee would like to see.
For you?
Yeah, thanks. I certainly agree with Councillor Wong's comments about the concern with wastewater treatment plant and the additional cost that have come out of commissioning it and now operating it. And whether it's through manufacture, through the province, which we're a partnership with the Fed. I know admin is working and emphasize exploring all the avenues we can to help mitigate those costs to the taxpayers. Just one question under the water treatment plant, what's the acronym P A C L S A, or pump failure, line failure?
I believe it's polyethylene chloride, but I'd have to find out for you for sure.
Okay, so that's.
This be a specific chemical.
Okay, thanks.
Councillor Ellsworth?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Along the lines of the previous counselors, I too have a real concern with wastewater treatment plant, although we've heard from the city manager that he's preparing a report and I respect that, we'll get that when we get that. But in the meantime, again, if you, if you read the opening statement under wastewater treatment plant under the summary, do you really read that? The Director of Public Works have made it very clear. And I'll read it. "The W W T P has had many ongoing issues from before the plant was turned over to the city." If I was building a house and I had hired a contractor and the contractor comes up to me and said, "We want to turn this property over to you, but electrical doesn't work, the plumbing doesn't work." I got a feeling I wouldn't be taking it over. This was not a small price for the taxpayers of Thompson. And I do understand the background and the history, although I wasn't at the, wasn't on the previous council, we were kind of putting a peck over, we had to do this thing and share it, you know, the federal and provincial government. But I don't know, out in the world, we could end up in a situation when, again, the Director of Public Works, he makes a statement, this is his report, not the council's report. And he states many, many ongoing issues. And here we are now costing the taxpayers of Thompson a lot of money that we had not budgeted for. Or even if it comes from the utility, it doesn't matter, it's still money that's cost them daily, not monthly, daily to remove this. And I don't know, and what I don't know, that untreated or treated or untreated sewage come from that plant, where is it going? Is it causing a problem for the rest of the city? What's happening with all of this? So in all due respect, I look forward to report from the city manager that will receive, and I'm sure from where we're going to get it. But I tell you, it should be something that mayor and council have a big concern about. And it has to be dealt with sooner than later and hopefully it won't be later. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, I know we've discussed this before with staff before. Just want to make sure that to keep you track of hours due to the upset, treatment upset, which is causing this problem or kept track of it, we discussed it before. Just so that we have those items as well when we discuss this with, after that report and once it's discussed with the engineer, the general contractor and the subs that, that turned over the wastewater treatment plant. And when is our year up? That's in.
I'll have to determine that, but it's my report.
They will still have to, the engineer will be coming up here to, to go over that again. We have our lists ready for them. One need, right? Because that'll be the topic of discussion for.
Yeah, I certainly agree with most of everything that everyone has said here. S P Rs are very simple technologies that can be made, not so simple with the technology and things, really, it's just air, beneficial bacteria, time, some beneficial temperature and sanitation at the end of the cycles. I'm, I'd just like to put my voice with those who said that they're concerned. I certainly am concerned. When we started off our term having to close a pool, unfortunately, that pool was sixty-something odd years old, maybe fifty-eight years old. So not like this where we have a brand-new facility. What I want to know is what recourse the city of Thompson has, should this facility not be able to demonstrate compliance with the regulatory environment currently set forth by the feds and the provincial government?
I'll discuss those in a camera with council.
At what point will that be made public? What point can that be made public?
That would be my discussion with council. Bye.
No, you've already spoken. If anybody that hasn't spoke, wish to say something? Okay, then I'll go next to Brady.
Yeah, thanks. It's just.
Sorry.
Quick follow-up to some of their remarks, they'd like Deputy Mayor, one mark about keeping track of these, these offset conditions so that we can demonstrate the manufacturer, what went wrong specifically, when. Did the operators maintain a logbook in the wastewater?
Yeah, I'm sure that's part of their operating.
Just as long as permission, so we kept up to date.
Councillor Wong?
Thank you. Well, I also want to make a comment on the grader. One of the oldest grader, which is the, I believe is Champion. And this product is very easy to get, part of when I look at the comment, the summary say like, it's trying very hard to get that. Same as the second oldest grader have the locking differentiation problem. So I think that is caused by the operator because that particular function do not break unless someone is forced to turn it on when it's driving. But those are mechanical, you can break that thing. So I think somehow, I hope the training part got to be more appropriate for the operator. And also when they say it's going to be a very hard to get the part, this is the caterpillar. We have a torn one dealer right here. I have to be able to, it happened to me one time, I ordered a part from the state. It did not take more than a week. I don't know what's so special about this grader, would be very hard to get the parts. That part, I wanted questioning about why it's so hard. I like to understand that part. So for us to see like the reason why it's delaying the, the snow clearing. Because I've been getting a lot of people asking me the question about this snow clearing performance this season especially. And I have a hard time to answer that question, so I just try to
Anyway.
Find a way to do that. So anyway, so those kind of comments, it just make me wonder what is so difficult about the parts? What exactly caused?
We can check into what's difficult about the part. I know our, personally, we're actually looking for parts for a grader that's a year older than this or one of the lodges and they have been on order since October, so I think that's just with the world, the way it isn't hard to get parts right now, so we can check on, on the parts. And as for operators, I believe that we are not in our place here to comment on that. We are here to set policy on what we expect at the end, so thank you very much. Anybody else make comment? Okay, seeing now?
Madam Mayor, if I could have a second one? I see here the need in the water treatment plant for backup power. To recall, there was a one-time backup power there because there was a tank there for a generator underground. That's it. That's not the point what I'm trying to get to. We certainly do need backup power for water. And would encourage all council administrations to work fast towards getting that.
The tanks that are there are for backup diesel pumping, not for electricity. So if power goes out, diesel pumps will turn on and keep water flowing out, but it doesn't actually allow for the production of water. Council has previously budgeted a partial amount towards electrical backup. And the administration is pursuing grants to cover the rest of it. That's something that the administration is actively working with the water service.
Thank you. Next, propose a boom five point three, the mayor's report for March thirty-first to April fourth. So I attended the public meeting for the foot care hosted by the Thompson Senior Resource Community Center on March twenty-fourth. They talked about foot care and other services for seniors that are hard to come by in the north and are lobbying the provincial government and will keep us up to date on how they're making out. I attended the announcement by Justice Minister Gertson in Winnipeg on March twenty-fifth. It was announced that the government is giving two point zero, two point two million dollars to M K O for a healing center plus slash juvenile restorative justice facility. It just one more thing that goes on with our community safety and strategy plan. And going on from the street breach and that, that we're really focusing on the youth in the north. And this is good to see that it's not just the city that is doing some of these plans to have another organization come on and partner with us and have this move forward. So I think, so thank you. Councillor Ellsworth, Councillor Valentino, City Manager Anthony. We met with Minister Elijah Modye during his visit to Thompson on March twenty-eighth. Then we also toured him after that to the site of the new sobering center and quite impressed and that's it for my report. Thank you. Next, as we're going to vote a development, six point one. It was tabled from the meeting, so I'll have, we don't need a, we're not in there for me. It was tabled from the March twenty-eighth meeting, review the new information resolution to approve the extension of the land lease for lot two, plan number five zero eight four K O K O Mark Vision, Manitoba Air Services Branch. Anthony?
As noted, this was tabled at the last regular meeting of council, brought back here for further discussion by council. So it's really council's opportunity to discuss what they'd like to see.
Councillor Wong?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First off, I was pretty critical of this when it came to council. It's in the same format. Not that I expected anything different for this discussion, but what I would like to see on the site map that's indicated where the proposed locations of boreholes will go for sampling. I see in the report, they're only proposing one point five meter depth. It's pretty obvious why, because it'll get down to a water table pretty quick there. That said, it's really important that we get the location of those right. In the letter also, it's a bit confusing and I'll ask administration to clarify who will be responsible for actually paying for the study. And, and if there'll be a deadline assigned to when sampling will take place.
The way the lease is written, it's the person who's leasing the lab that is responsible for any of the work, the cleanup that goes with it, so the department that's responsible for. In terms of the timeline, we're waiting to hear back on that and what their timeline will be planned for this. As is noted, their intention is to do their testing and then to decommission the site.
Thank you. Councillor Wong?
That's fine. My question was just the who would be responsible for it, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other? You see until there's no weather.
Yeah, the remaining issue plan and accompanying soil investigation will require separate can you explain that last sentence to me? Just that would get there.
I'm assuming that has to do with their tendering processes, but we'd have to follow up on what they.
For, if I may follow up on that. Is the intent of the Government Services Branch to be able to hand this property back to the city of Thompson under that?
Their intent is by the end of this year to tear down all those buildings and remediate.
And hand back or continue to use?
No, to hand it back to the city, so just continue their lease.
Yes, we had to talk about that before. Councillor McMyrdal?
Yeah, thanks, Madam Mayor. I'm just embracing the soil investigation, it said, based on information present. But just wondering if the city, I'm assuming, was consulted to weigh in on that body of information that is now guiding where the investigation will take place?
No, so they're waiting for the snow to melt so that they can go and figure out where they should be sent. Once they determine where they're going to sample, then they would let us know. And then we could have a review with them on if we're satisfied with what they're saying. Right now it's underneath the snow, so they know that there's contamination out there, but their plan is to go out and do their sampling plan, have a review, make sure it meets the standards and then move forward that way.
Okay, that's.
So that's why I'm saying what's out there is they have to go see the site, determine where they'd be sampling for sampling.
And, and a lot of this site, this isn't a new brown spill. A lot of these have been there for a number of years. Actually, it goes back quite a while. I can remember reaching over to Councillor Fountain when he was still in his previous job, wondering, you know, what was happening in that. He was checking into it back at that time, so this is not something that has just come up, that these spills just happened in this last year or so.
Yeah, yeah, if I may, that's my understanding. This is a long-going thing, so just wondering how that information was being accumulated and whether the city was being consulted properly. Thanks.
Okay, so Anthony, you're so our direction to Anthony is to reach out, see, I guess, let them know that we need some more information before we give permission.
Yeah, it's, it's just a council's point. It's interesting. Regardless of the lease is signed or not, there's still seven buildings there, so what they're saying is that they want to pay for this year and then their plan is to get rid of those and not to do. So really, by not cashing the check, it really doesn't do much. Those buildings are still there. It's not like I can tell them to remove them because removing them is what their plan is. So I guess what I'm looking for is what is the direction here? We're not signing that one year. We're not signing that one year lease, the buildings are still on the property. So
So who's in favor?
I can keep getting information, but those buildings still exist with foundations.
And as long as they've got a lease with us, then we can hold them responsible for that remediation of the, uh, Deputy Mayor.
It plus or?
Yeah.
Um, yeah, like, like you said, this is already leased. It's been leased since like nineteen sixty-eight or something like that. The fact that they're at least, uh, looking at, doing soil analysis, uh, and then do your remediation. Great, uh, this right now just gives us the lease for a year. Let's move forward. That's so that they could continue what they're supposed to be doing. I, I don't think, uh, geologists you know what they have to do? They have to hire somebody outside of our entity. We can just ask that we see that the information of we can't last, right? And I think they have to give us that etiquette. Am I correct?
The way the lease is written, we can require them that, yes, like they, they return the land.
So let's move forward with signing this lease and getting that information. At least they're doing something. Instead of just leaving out there like there, we can't even rent anything. They're almost.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Certainly, uh, Deputy Mayor stole most like other. Well, we're going to collect money. They got to clean it up. They, they, they already indicate the work they're going to do. I'd suggest we bring it back to the next regular council meeting. Uh, you know, the emphasis that we're, we're actually signing this lease to make sure that work is carried through properly. We communicate it with them other than if they don't have a lease, well, oh, we want you to do this or that. Now you got a lease, it's kind of more directive to me. So I do agree with bringing them back in the spirit of what they have indicated they're going to do with the cleanup and the demolition of the buildings. And if I understand this correct, after the twenty-two year, they're not planning on leasing that to that. So we got to make sure that they clean up the site so that we intend to not lease it to someone else that we know we're leasing between sites. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay, uh, with that being said, uh, who's in favor of moving this to, uh, onto the regular meeting of council so that we can go ahead with the lease next week? Okay, move ahead. Seven legislative update on by law two zero two four two zero two two, use of municipal resources and adoption.
So this is a new bylaw that's required by the province due to changes to the municipal act. Uh, it's to do with council and election activities and those people who are candidates using, uh, city or Thompson resources as part of their election. So it's a new change that has to come forward. Uh, the province provided a template and Tammy and other members of the team reviewed work that's been done in other communities and have added it in. So it's here for first review by council with the recommendation that it should go for first reading at the next regular meeting in the council.
Thank you. Any concerns, questions? Sounds good, Anthony, move it on. That will call for adjournment. Counselor, uh, over and Deputy Mayor Lepper, all in favor?